I'll give it another minute until we get started here. Okay, it's 11 o'clock, so I think we'll get started. I'd like to call to order the Assembly Public Safety Committee meeting. It is September 7 at 11:00 a.m. Let's see, Amelia, if you would call roll, please.
Thank you. Mr. Perez Verdia.
Here.
Mr. Cross. Ms. Allard. Mr. Constant. Mr. Dunbar. Ms. LaFrance. Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Quinn Davidson. Mr. Rivera. Mr. Salt.
Here.
Mr. Ballant. Ms. Zalatell.
Mr. Chair, I would note for the record that I'm here, Mr. Constant.
Thanks. And just for the record.
This is Jamie, I apologize.
Sure, thanks. That was Ms. Allard, yes?
Yes, thank you, Cameron.
Thanks. Okay, well, let's get started. We want to begin with our APD updates, just as a reminder to the members. If you have a question, want to get in the queue, please, please put yourself into the chat. And we'll start with Chief Curl.
Morning, everybody. Deputy Chief Case is also online, and in my office is Sergeant Noel, he's my traffic sergeant. He's going to cover a couple of the topics here, and if you have any questions, please ask him while he's here, because at the conclusion of the presentation, he's going to go back and continue his daily job. So hopefully, you can ask questions while he's here. So Sergeant Noel is actually going to cover the first topic. We're going to cover the, basically, it says sound ordinance, it's loud vehicle, loud exhaust. We've had a lot of complaints about noisy vehicles. And Sergeant Noel is just going to give some background, what we've done and what we think can be done in the future to make it better.
Okay, thank you. So when this first came to my attention, I met with Ms. Willoughby, and we discussed a couple of things that we need to address. I reached out to other agencies throughout the country and looked at a lot of laws in states and municipalities regarding loud exhaust. And it turns out that our, the wording in our municipal code is substantially similar to a lot of other jurisdictions. What I determined is that about 80% of the people receiving citations for loud exhaust are just paying their fines. So we don't have a lot of opportunity to encounter these in court to see exactly what it takes to get a conviction if it goes there, because ultimately, these are correctable citations, and we want the people to bring their vehicles in compliance. They're just not taking that option because the fine is so low. So what I suggested to the work groups, including Ms. Willoughby, is that the fine would be increased from the current fine of $100. Similarly, with tinted windows, we had done a similar increase some years ago. We went from $150 to 300, and now it's 500. And what we saw change there is about an 80% compliance of people getting their citation removed. So my recommendation was to increase the fine to $300 to help encourage people to bring their vehicles in compliance instead of just paying the ticket, because that's not what, we're there for compliance, not the fine. This year, what the traffic unit has done is we've worked to prioritize loud vehicle enforcement. We've done five organized events with multiple traffic officers working them. We purchased two sound meters, because there's two theories under municipal code that you could issue someone a violation for. One is for exceeding a certain noise level, which is 85 decibels during normal traffic, normal daytime hours, when we did these events, and the other is for having a modified exhaust louder than the factory designed originally to be. So we've issued them under both of those, but we did buy sound meters, so we could do the 85 decibel enforcement. And we have increased our total citations this year over last year's within the traffic unit. That's what we've done so far, as far as enforcement goes. The plan going forward is to, for us, is to keep increasing our enforcement, so we can have some of these encounters perhaps in court, so we know what the magistrates will want from that end. But we've also made that request to increase the fines, so that, like I said, people can bring in the compliance. And that was.
Do you want to cover some of the details we did this summer, just to?
Yes, so five separate times that we went around the city based on where citizen complaints have come in. We worked in the area of 13th and L Street, we've worked on A Street, 100th and Victor. We've worked at Diamond and Arlene, I forget off the top of my head where the fifth location was. We did those, in those areas for enforcement. That is actually a little bit more difficult than it sounds, because inevitably, when you group up in a specific area with a sound meter, because you have, when you're doing the sound meter method, you have to measure 50 feet from the center of the roadway. So you can't move it, you're not very mobile, you have to be in one location. Getting in the right location to find these violations, turned out, we'd have to wait quite a while sometimes for anything to appear. You could maybe hear something in another part of the city, but to be in the exact place and time was a little bit difficult. However, we were able to increase our citations more from the last year.
Okay, thanks. So basically, our recommendation would be to increase the fine like we've done on tinted windows, and we think that could see some, instead of people just correcting the ticket and keeping their cool sounding loud exhaust, they not want to fork over $500, and they would actually put it back to the original manufactured standards. So does anyone have any questions, reference loud exhaust, the sound ordinance?
Cameron, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a few people in the queue for you, and just before I start into the queue, wanted to just share that there are a number of people, I think, who are on the call today, who are going to speak at the end about their concerns around this, and that we have had a number of community councils forward resolutions voicing concerns about this. So we're going to start with Ms. Allard, and then go to Mr. Peterson, and then Mr. Constant. Ms. Allard?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for being here. My question is, it's quite simple. I understand that we're increasing the fines, but we still have, I know we say 80%, but there's still 20%, there's still 20% who are violating. And so my question would be, when we're going to increase the fines, that's one way, but there should also be a corrective action. So the fine is fine, but we should also do a corrective action, and what I mean by that is, we should implement the fact that, okay, here's your fine for violating the law. But number two is that we have to do some recourse, meaning, what do you do to fix it? So we need to be able to follow up with those individuals for them to bring proof in that they've actually rectified the situation, or they could continue to break the law. What do you think about that suggestion, Chief?
Well, the fact that it's a correctable ticket, that's, there's no option for that. The correctable ticket allows them to either fix it or pay the fine. So I did mention, I dated myself, and I said, we could always go back to vehicle inspections here in the city, which I think people would want to put me down for that, but that was the one, we didn't see him very often, because you'd have to pass a vehicle inspection. And we've had that in the past, and we didn't see this problem when we actually had vehicle inspections. So if we keep it at a correctable ticket, those are the only two options. There is no repercussion, the only repercussion is we can stop them again and give them the same ticket. And if they fail to correct it a second time, then that would be an additional $500.
I follow up, Mr. Verdia.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess one of my other suggestions could be, if they don't correct it, instead of another $500 ticket, it escalates, almost like three strikes and you're out. So maybe the next one we do is a $1,000 ticket as an incentive for them to fix it. What do you think about that?
Right, we do have that with, there is an ordinance that deals with loud stereos, and there is a first offense, second offense, and a third offense, which actually increases the fine and actually allows us to seize the car stereos from the vehicles if it happens. So that could be a possibility. There is, we do have history with loud noise from stereos, deals with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, and I was just going to ask you if any of the tickets you've been writing have been for the loud noise ordinance. We had, we changed the ordinance a couple of years ago and increased the fine, because we had so many, you know, you know, loud stereos playing all hours of the day and night that it was waking people up. So I'm just wondering, has there been any enforcement in that area?
I thought about that. Hey, this is Sergeant Noel. So when I pulled these numbers, I was only looking at the exhaust one. I'm not aware of any different effort regarding the loud stereos, that would be something I have to research a little bit. But as far as loud exhaust goes, there are, all the citations that I was mentioning have been issued under the current AMC 944-230 for the excessive noise or exhaust, noise or fumes from exhaust.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Constant?
Yeah, thank you. So it's interesting to talk about exhaust and noise. I think that one of the reasons this conversation was sparked, excuse me, was actually because of motorcycle racing. And there's this kind of a pattern, I think there probably are some people here to talk about this as well, of hot rodding their motorcycles from basically Hillcrest, Spinnard, that loop up to Government Hill and back, and blasting the noise as loud as you could imagine. You can feel it in your bones if you live within a half mile of that road. And so I'm wondering if and what the tactics are that the department's working on to address that, because it feels like it's kind of at a peak right now.
This is Sergeant Noel again. So we have requested some funding from the Alaska Highway Safety Office for 2023 that would, for several traffic safety enforcement endeavors, and one of them is to, for racing specifically. Personally, I just attended impaired driving traffic safety conference in Texas that was, that was funded by the Alaska Highway Safety Office and NHTSA. And one of the sessions I went to there was a session on an effective street racing enforcement program. And I attended that session, and I got a lot of insight on how to organize something like that. And I got some contact information for the agency that put that on. So I'm hopeful next year we have that funding, so we can set some time aside specifically to do that enforcement, and then we'll have, hopefully, we can model something similar to what that other agency did.
And Chris, we've also done some operations during the summertime. I know C Street near, south of Diamond, going toward Minnesota has always been a problem. We've done setup details where we've tried to curtail the racing. And so we do take an active approach into trying to combat this. The problem is actually finding out where they're going to race. I know we had the fatality down there on Postmark Drive this summer, that was part of the racing. And we've actually joined with the military. If, if we can find that the military are congregating around Tacono Mall or anywhere, we can actually call the military out there, and they'll actually round up their military guys and bring them back on base. So we're looking at it, and we'll take every effort we can to curtail it.
Yeah, thanks. And I know you have been, I see officers parked on the Spinnard Crossing down there, going between downtown and Spinnard, kind of tucked in and monitoring. And I also remember that motorcycler who died right there, I think it was last summer or somewhere before. And in some ways, sadly, it's self-correcting behavior, but I appreciate the development of a strategy.
Thanks, Mr. Constant. And just for the record, we've had several people join. Mr. Dunbar, Mr. Ballant, Ms. LaFrance have all joined us. And I don't see anybody else in the queue on this topic. I did want to just mention that one of the conversations we had was about the meters that you're using, the sound meters, and whether there would be an advantage of helping to purchase additional meters. Would that, would that help in your enforcement as well, Chief?
And this is Sergeant Noel, I'll take this question.
Sure.
At this, at this time, I think that the two that we have is sufficient, because we have the other section of municipal code, we can issue citations under. And people are not contesting them in court, so we don't really know how much the sound meters are going to help on those cases where we have them, if we're just paying the tickets. So I would not recommend purchasing more. We have the two for the traffic unit, we can share between the two shifts that we work. And then I recommend reassessing that probably next year, see if more would be helpful.
Right. And then my only other question was about the organizations that are installing the modified exhausts. Has there been any outreach to these organizations, ensuring that they understand the law? And that there is, is there any effort to work with them, to advise their clients in terms of the risk of modifying their exhaust and then going out and driving it?
This is, a lot of these places, just like the tinted windows, they actually have little signs up there that say, hey, this is against the law, it violates the law. The problem is, it's not against the law if you're on private property. The only time it becomes a violation of the ordinance is when they actually are on a roadway. So it's perfectly legal for these people to put tinted windows, modify the exhaust systems on the private property. But once, and they're fine, because they're on their own, they're on their business. Once they hit the street, the business has done their part in saying, hey, just to let you know, this is against a lot of drive on the roadway, they've done their part. So I'm not sure if more education is going to do any good, and a lot of these people do it themselves, too. It's not that hard to take off the exhaust and put in a straight pipe. And the reason they do it, if you guys don't know, mufflers have baffling in them. The baffling reduces the torque or the RPM, so they take the baffling out, and it increases your RPM and allows you to go faster, and it's, unfortunately, it's louder.
Thank you, Chief. It doesn't look like I have any other questions on this topic. And it looks like we're going into the body cam update. Do you want me to give a little bit of context before you do your update, or do you like to do your update first?
No, go ahead. You prepared, spent a lot of time preparing that. I give your update, and Deputy Chief Case is going to give the latest update on where we are with the, actually, implementation.
Great. Well, I wanted to, in a pre-meeting of this conversation, the chief and I talked about the value of, it's been a while since, since the whole discussion around body cameras started, and it might be of value to give some sort of background and context. The, there is a sheet on the website, on our public safety website, it looks like this. And so I'll just walk through this a bit. Hopefully, folks had a chance to look at it, but if you hadn't, I'm going to just walk through it a bit and give a little bit of information. I'm just going to read this top part. "The Anchorage community is currently in the process of creating a policy for newly created body worn camera program at the Anchorage Police Department. APD has been engaged with the community in discussions to implement body worn cameras for several years, with the conversation getting more traction in 2020. By 2020, APD announced that they would pursue the program and ask the Anchorage Assembly for funding. The Assembly put a tax levy proposition on the April 2021 ballot, which was approved by the voters. In June 2021, APD released a draft body worn camera policy and solicited community input. Community members were largely satisfied with the policy, and APD engaged in discussions to finalize the policy. In July, the 2020, in July 2021, the Bronson administration took office and had the municipality legal department do a new review of the policy, citing concerns from the legal department regarding privacy issues in relation to the Alaska state law. The administration and APD issued a revised draft of the October 2021. The revisions dropped some of the community's top priorities, causing negative public feedback on the revised policy. APD opened an online public comment portal and submitted comments through November 6, 2021. On February 2, 2022, APD released an updated draft body worn camera policy on comments received from the public. On February 18, 2022, the Anchorage Assembly held a joint work session with the Public Safety Advisory Committee to review the latest draft and to see if there's room for the Assembly, administration, and APD, and the community to come together to support a final body worn camera policy. In March 2022, APD signed a contract with Hexagon Software Services to cover implementation, maintenance, and support services for the data storage system for five years, and it spent the summer working on the initial bidding process before selecting a vendor to provide the equipment and services needed to implement the cameras. APD also spent the summer negotiating the body worn camera policy with the Anchorage Police Department Employees Association, which as of September 2022 is still ongoing. In August 2022, the American Civil Liberties Union, Alaska Black Caucus, NAACP, and civil rights law firm Northern Justice Project submitted a letter to APD, the mayor, and the Assembly, warning that the organizations may take legal action if the department doesn't release a timeline or make immediate progress towards equipping officers with cameras, and asking for the municipality to initiate arbitration if there is no agreement before September 15. And then there is a timeline on here, giving specific milestones, beginning in 2014, all the way through sort of current time, as well as at the bottom, a number of details and links that, that, that people can go to, to get copies of the different versions of the policy over time, and other information related to this topic. So I just wanted to share that, hopefully that that gives a little bit of timeline and context. Feel free to review this after the meeting. And with that, I'll hand it over to Chief Curl and his, and his team to give an update on the body worn camera policy and the body worn camera program. Chief?
Okay, thank you, Cameron. Well, one thing, I think that, one thing that's been lost in the whole tax levy, I'm going to refer to an update, a newsletter, and a news article in the Anchorage Daily News, dated January 27, 2021. And this was a big article that, it's titled Anchorage Voters Will Decide on a Tax Levy That Would Give Police Body Cameras and Other Tech. And this is before the April election, and it's a good story, and I just want to read. This was the understanding of the Anchorage Daily News, and I think this was the understanding of the police department as well, when we actually put together a technology package. We had some major techno, technological systems that we needed updating, and we are, we are for body cameras, but we had prior needs. And this sentence is going to come right out of the article, and it's referenced to the, the tax levy. And it says, "The money will help update a computed aided dispatch and record management system that is at the end of life and at a risk of catastrophic failure. Those upgrades are needed before cameras can be implemented." And we have been saying this from the very start, that our CAT RMS system is our priority, and we need to get that up. And I think that was part of the whole, that's why this is a technology package, because we do have technological needs that need to be upgraded and dealt with. And I, somehow, it's been hijacked that the tax levy was just for body cameras, and I just want to correct that. It wasn't. It's for technology for the Anchorage Police Department. And our, our main need was a CAT RMS system, which we are in the process of updating. So I just wanted to highlight that fact, and it's in the Daily News, so it must be true. Now I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Case, and he's going to go and tell you about the progress we made and where we stand on the body camera negotiations with the union.
So as Mr. Perez Rea has, has mentioned, is kind of outlined that he went through, throughout the summer, we've been in negotiations with the APDEA. We've made a couple of modifications to the policy, as we've been going back and forth in negotiations. Currently, the policy is with the APDEA, and we're awaiting a response from them, which we should get here in a couple of days. And we may go back to the table and continue negotiating with them. And, and we may not, just depends on what, kind of what the response is. So it's kind of an ongoing process. Unfortunately, the police department doesn't control the speed at which that occurs completely. It's a joint effort between us and the union. And so we kind of have to go back and forth on this particular issue until we can kind of come to a resolution, with hopes of coming to that resolution without having to go to arbitration, because that's going to be quite a lengthy process.
All right, thank you, Sean. And just to give an update on the other thing, I did promise at the last Public Safety Committee meeting that we were going to have the, we're going to do our part and put the body camera out for our request for proposal for a bid. We turned everything over to Purchasing on the date that I told you guys. Purchasing sent it back to us with some questions. We modified that. And as of last Friday, we sent it back to Purchasing, so it should be out for, for bid for the body camera system here as soon as Purchasing does their thing and puts it out on the street. So we are still going forward, looking for a vendor that's going to provide us a camera system that is interoperable with our, the Hexagon for the CAT RMS system and all our other systems here at the police department. I think you're muted, Cameron.
Thank you very much. I just noticed. I just want to pause for a second to see if there are questions from any members on the issue of body cameras. And I'm not seeing any in the queue. Oh, there we go. I figured there's going to be at least one. Mr. Rivera? Mr. Rivera, can you hear me? Because we can't hear you. My understanding is that a number of members are in the same room together, so I think they're trying to figure out the audio. Well, why don't we give them a chance?
Yeah, they're going to create feedback.
Well, I can hear you, Felix.
Okay, can you all hear me now without feedback?
Yep, yep, you got it.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so yeah, just a couple of things. I appreciate the update, Chief and Deputy Chief. So first, you know, I think it's always important to center intent here. And while I agree, Chief, that when this proposal was sent to the Assembly for consideration, to put the tax levy on the ballot for the voters to consider, you know, it was branded as a technology package. But, you know, if you look clearly at both the legislative intent and then the, the will of the voters, you know, primarily, 90% of the focus was around getting body cameras on officers. So, you know, hopefully, that will continue to be the focus here, so that we can get body cameras on our officers as quickly as possible. With that known intent, and really not distracting from any of the other issues, I didn't hear any dates. Are, is there a date from the administration where if you can't come to agreement by X date, then you will seek arbitration?
No, I'm sorry, this is DC Case. There, there's not a date, and the reason why there's not a date. date is because, you know, as long as the Anchorage Police Department Employees Association is willing to engage in, you know, negotiations, we're, we're going to make good faith efforts to continue those negotiations. And it's so, like, you know, we can't, we can't say to them, hey, if you haven't made up your mind in two weeks, regardless, we're going to, we're going to arbitration. That just, that makes the, the good faith effort a little bit challenging. I would say that I do feel like we're kind of getting towards the end of this in, in terms of kind of our back and forth in our negotiation process. But yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to put a date on. I just, I'm going to be wrong. And then we're going to be talking in a couple of months how I was wrong on the date. So.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry, we have to figure out our muting on our side. Thanks so much. Thanks so much, Deputy Chief, for that. I can appreciate the intricacies of the negotiation and just want to continue to urge that we move forward at all possible haste so that we can get these body cameras on officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. And I just noticed that Mr. Cross has his hand up. Does that mean you have a question or comment, Mr. Cross?
Yes, I do. I appreciate it greatly. I'm curious if you can speak as to how the negotiations with the Anchorage Police Department Employees Association are going, what unresolved issues there are, and where we're at in that, in settling any concerns that they might have.
This is Deputy Chief Case. I'll take that. So we consider kind of what's being said in the negotiation process, kind of part of the confidential process that we're going through. Generally, we, if we start talking about both on the APD side or the APDA side publicly, what's been talked about, then sometimes that kind of damages the, the trust and relationship in, in negotiations. So we, we tend not to, not to talk about that. It, there's a couple of issues that we have left on the table. So it's not, it's not the entire policy. We've, we've ironed out pretty much all the things with the exception of one or two areas.
Yeah, I understand. And I want to respect that relationship. Right now, because of the timeframe, I think what we're looking at is we're unintentionally running into a public trust issue. This, this body cam is probably the second most, next to homeless, the second most popular email that hits my, hits my inbox. And so I understand the confidentiality. Maybe you guys can work together on releasing something to the public so they feel as if it's progress is being made. That would be all my suggestion. Because although you want to be confidential, we also, I feel like, over communicating with the public in our process is only in everybody's benefit. So thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think potentially we could do something like that. Thanks for the seat there, Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. I don't see any other people on this topic. I know Ms. Zalatell has a question not related to the items on the agenda. So why don't we get through the, the next two items and then I'll make sure to bring her back into the queue to ask her, her questions. So Chief, anything else on body camera? Do you want to move on to tow update?
No, that covers it. So the tow update, as you know, about three weeks ago, I informed you guys that we ran out of money for towing junk vehicles. I've worked with the administration. We think we might be able to get some money from the state because some of the vehicles we tow are on state roads. And we've done an in-depth analysis of how many vehicles are on state roads. And unfortunately, the majority of the vehicles that we tow are, you know, they're abandoned on the side roads and they're really not the state roads. And we'll see if the state's going to give us a little bit of money to help offset the costs. But we're still looking for other funding sources. Right now, we are still doing the paperwork. We're getting prepared in the event that money is given to us to start towing vehicles, junk vehicles again. We have about 33 vehicles that we have all the paperwork. We just haven't turned it over to the tow company because we can't afford to pay them. So I haven't seen too many complaints come across where complaints about junk vehicles. You guys might be able to tell me more if you're getting them from citizens. But as of right now, we're still trying to find funding that can pay for the rest of the year. And I know the tow companies are waiting, well, the tow company is waiting for us to turn on the green light and they'll start towing vehicles again.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the members on, on towing? And I don't see any. So let's go on to your last item, Chief.
Okay, this, this cycle, this came about, referenced the tragic death of the two people, the two young recently graduated students died as a result of a drunk driver. So people just, they want to know what we can do to stop impaired driving. And we're going to give you a few details of where we stand so far this year as far as fatality accidents and what actions we take and maybe some efforts we can make going forward to educate people and hopefully reduce the number of fatality accidents here in the municipality. And Sergeant Noel is going to take this one again.
Sergeant Noel again. I just wanted to start out with going over some numbers over the last few years for fatalities in Anchorage. So far in 2022, we've had 15 fatalities. Year to date in 2021, there were 12. In 2020, there were 11. 2019, there were 15. In 2018, there were 16. The total fatalities in those four, last four years were 21 fatalities in 21, 22 fatalities in 2020, 22 fatalities in 2019, and 23 fatalities in 2018. I recently, regarding that fatality, 15 in Cordova, I was just a couple of days ago speaking with the Director of the Alcohol Marijuana Control Board about things that we could do to coordinate with each other regarding enforcement as far as people being over served at bars before driving, such as, there's some indicators may have been a case going on here. So I wanted to talk to them so we could coordinate those sorts of efforts. Another thing that comes up this time of year tends to be an increase in pedestrians struck by vehicles, often comes resulting in fatalities. The NHTSA recently came out with a procedural guide on pedestrian safety enforcement operations. And that's a 63-page document that I'm going through right now to develop a plan for the traffic unit to do some more meaningful enforcement regarding pedestrian safety. And that's a multi-pronged approach. And that's something that I'm hoping to implement either later this month or next month where we can start doing some more of that. We also have worked with the Department of Transportation this year to coordinate increased lighting on high pedestrian strike areas at night because there are some parts of the city where the state turns off lighting to conserve energy at night. But that's a time when pedestrians are the most vulnerable. So the DOT has agreed to turn on lighting on sections of C Street in Minnesota to assist with that. I've also been engaging in meetings with municipal and state traffic engineers regarding urban safety zones, places where we have higher level of fatalities, specifically pedestrian fatalities, where they could apply different engineering aspects and we could deploy different enforcement tactics to try to make a difference there. And that's kind of what I've heard, Chief.
Okay, one, in the past, we've looked at, in the lower 48, they do DUI checkpoints. I, we've actually looked at that here and we, it's been deemed unconstitutional. So we, if you're thinking about that, that wouldn't work here in the municipality. We do have a DUI unit that's out there. They're, I mean, they do a fantastic job. I think if you've seen any of our DUI numbers, DUI arrest numbers, you'd be pretty amazed at how many people drive drunk in Anchorage. And that, those are only the ones we catch. So we are always looking to increase enforcement and work on education. Like Sergeant Noel said, lighting is a big thing. We, we're working with the highway safety to try to make pedestrian safe zones. And we're, we're doing everything. I think we need some help with the actually getting in there and doing bar checks from the Marijuana and Alcohol Board to actually get in there and do some checks to make sure that people aren't over serving and abiding by the rules that we have in Title IV. I think that's what it is. Any questions?
Yeah, we have a few, few questions. Let's start with Mr. Dunbar.
Can you hear me, Mr. Perez Rea?
Yep.
Okay. A couple of questions. One, related to the previous topic. So I thought we had just appropriated additional funding for towing. I remember 400,000 being a number, and I'm trying to remember where it was. But I'd like a sort of confirmation about whether or not that happened. If not, I think it's certainly something we are interested in. And then on the fatality.